And we're live. Hey, guys. Good to see you again. And it's been a long week for me and it's just Tuesday for me. So I hope everyone's doing fine. So I wasn't able to ask in the polls like, how are you guys? But I hope you guys doing great or man, but not bad. So today we're back with a Q and A session. If you guys have any questions, just you can, you can, if you want to be talked about, you can go and ask a question to, to, um, on the bottom of your screen should be there beside the polls. So in this stream, we're going to do some quick recap, thirty minutes, thirty minutes of recap, like half the session. But I, I, I realized last time, like, I was just talking over content, but I want you guys to tell me what you, what you want to go over. So, so it's more like a you and me thing, not just a me thing, okay? And then we're gonna do like a, I call it a vocab slam, but basically I'm gonna flash you a screen of all these terms, the specific historical terms, at least like the empires or the, or the, or like specific historical terms, we'll go over, um, in, in the list. I condensed in the list and you tell me what you want to go over on. Once again, say interact, interactive thing. And this is, isn't this, we're gonna do some document practice. So if you're familiar with like the new, like the recent college board announcement, college board announcement, college board announced that no more multiple choice, no more SAQs, no more LEQs. It's just a mini DBQ. And there's, there's a couple, there's a lot of rubric changes there. So not a lot actually, but quite, quite a bit of adjustments. So we're gonna go over that so you know what you're, what you're equipping yourself with the battle. Like, don't go blind, like, think of like, think, imagine you're a Mongol. You're not gonna go like, you're not gonna go the wrong way, you know? So get a prep yourself, get to know what you're, what you're gonna do. So there's that. Now we're gonna do some recap. So my plan is, so pick your poison. So my plan is I'll go, so college board, like the outline, like the course description has for unit three, which by the way is on land-based empires during the early modern period. So if you remember, early modern period is fourteen fifty, seventeen fifty. And honestly, I'm most associated with the age of exploration. But that's for like maritime empires until it's on a land base. So what continued in mainland China? What happened in China? What happened in, what happened after the Mongols? Because that was the post-classical era. Now we're doing the early modern era. What happened to what new empires arose? Like what continued, what changed? So you should, you should be asking yourself all these questions while you're thinking of the unit. So once again, unit three is on land, land empires during the fourteen fifty, seventeen fifty. So early modern period. So if you're doing it by time period, that's okay. If you're doing it by unit, that's okay. So in the chat, like, if you want me to go over to prioritize this, any of this first, just tell me the number. Like, do you want to know how empires expand first? Do you want to know how empires administered themselves first, belief systems first, or comparison? So tell me in the chat. So because I don't wanna, I mean, it's not boring at all. I like, I like talking, but I don't wanna just go over like in one by one, like, you know, in order. Because I know some of you are like, I already know that, you know? So, okay, three point one, we're going order. Okay, so, okay, so, okay, let's decide the order first. So I see, so we'll go with one and then four, and we will go next two or three. Okay, one, four, three, two. So you guys say in the chat, so, all right, let's talk about the empires first, like how they expanded. So let's first define land-based empire. First, don't overthink it. Yes, it is based on land. So don't think of any like, because I know when you think of like empires, you think in, in this time period, think of, let's say, Britain. Well, Britain had its overseas empire. It had the thirteen colonies in America. It had the, it had like colonies in Africa, colonies in Asia, in India. So don't think of that, just think of like those who are like stuck in land, like they're stuck, they had no choice. So what do they all have in common? And don't mind the box for a while. It had little state-sponsored naval activity. That just means they don't, they don't like, they don't go, they don't go out of their, their bubble. They don't go out the Atlantic, they don't go out the Pacific that much. There's little naval activity. Mostly it's just the merchants. Yeah, yes, there is still international trade, but it wasn't sponsored by the leader. Let's say, um, the Ottoman Empire, like the Sultan, that's not Sultan, but like the, um, the head of the government didn't, didn't sponsor it. It was just the merchants. Well, they did, it's like, it's like do whatever you want, kind of. That's why I said merchants carry the team. But we have exceptions here. That's why there's a box there. So like the Ottomans, Ming China, so like the Ming Dynasty and the French Empire, they all had naval expeditions. If you remember Ming, in the, in the Ming Dynasty, we have Zhenghe or Zhanghe or whatever pronounced it. And the French Empire, we see, um, we see, basically, we all, we see all of these naval expeditions. So it's not, it's not common in every empire. I mean, it's not, it's not completely like, you must not have an able expedition, no. Um, in fact, you could point these out, these guys in the box, you can point out as like, if, if we're talking about, if, if a prom talks about, let's say, expansion of land empires, of course, you're gonna say, oh, they expanded by land and then they did this, they conquered this, they conquered that, they went that way. They, um, they expanded eastward. You can, you can point out all these trends, but if you want complexity, you want sophistication, you can add like a nuance in your reasoning, you can say a but, however, these empires, the Ottomans, in the, um, China, this time for French, um, you know, did not stay in their bubble and they did, they did all these naval, naval expeditions. So you can see that. Uh, the Tokugawa Shogunate, so it was a pretty extensive as the other ones, but they did it. They did like a, uh, they did like an invasion of Korea at some point. So if you remember, Japan is like its own archipelago of islands here. So to get to Korea, you need, you need to, you need a ship, you need boat, I mean, not boats, you need ships. So, and remember imperialism is a huge, huge, huge theme in AP world. So it's all about conquering, it's all about, it's all about expanding, it's all about getting all the land near you. So this actually, people say that, oh, it was in nineteen forty, like, I know, I think I was thinking this conversation, it was in nineteen forty's when Japan just, nineteen thirty's, Japan started conquering everyone. Remember World War Two? Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't start there. It starts actually like as early as the Tokugawa Shogunate. If you remember, Tokugawa Shogunate, everyone, Japan was united. So, so, um, Japan, remember feudal Japan before that, everyone split up, like, survive, um, kill or be killed, you know, survive with the fittest, kind of. Like, you have these local lords in their own, in their own, like, like spears of land here. But not, but under the Tokugawa Shogunate, it got reunited. So we see a united Japan now, they're like, what are we doing? We were fighting all this time when we could just grab all these, all these, we could just conquer, invade all our neighbors. Let's go there, let's go. So once again, these are exceptions. So these would add in complexity. Let's say if there's a prom based on this unit. So little, no, little to no naval activity, except for these guys. Going back, some are ruled by nomads. Honestly, I just think of the Mong, think of the Mongols or think of any other, so, um, any other empire. But think of like a cycle, that's the cycle of empires. For as early as twelve hundred to this later as, like, the modern period. So you see, you see a cycle, like this, so this guy's a big guy today, but it's weakening corruption. We see external invasions. We see, it's going downhill. We see, um, we see abuses in like, you know, political, like, like the rulers being too lax. And then now we see this rising empire taking over. So remember that cycle? Well, for land-based empires, most of the time, it's mostly about external invaders. They're like, huh, you see, so think of the Byzantine Empire. So fourteen, um, I think fourteen fifty-three, like it fell to the Ottomans. Why? Because they had a superior technology. Eventually were able to harness gunpowder. And the Ottoman Empire didn't start as, didn't start like, oh, we're, we're, we're a city over there. No, they were nomads and they were looking for an empire to settle to, like not settle, settle, but eventually take over for their own. So we see these nomads eventually assimilating or getting adjusted to like this area. And they were like, we want this, and then they take over. And I said localists, because once again, why is there no, think about it, why is there no naval activity? Because they don't care. They just want to stay there, they wanna, they don't wanna, they're not really like global domination people. So they stayed there, they were like local, they stayed local. They didn't stay like, they were like, oh, I miss it worldwide, it's gonna conquer everyone. No, they were just focused on maintaining, protecting territory and having, having something to eat, having something to live on, under, having something to drink, you know? All those, um, stuff alongside like, what, what, what the local empire would typically have, like religion, art, architecture. They're mostly monarchies, absolute monarchy. So what, well, yeah, um, it's not, when they say absolute monarchy, I just, I just meant like, it's, it's not like a democracy per se, because it's gonna emerge later, later on. It's not necessarily a, it's always authoritarian either, or, um, sometimes it is, but not always. So here it's usually monarchy in whatever name or column, whatever they're called, a Sultan or they called a, a, whatever you call them, like a king, well, that's a, stick with the basic, a king, there's a king, there's like a head figure, the figure at the top. In the hierarchy, there's only one person at the top and it's, it's either whatever, whoever's ruling that whole empire. So it continues during this time period. Once again, so the change, big change here, they stopped using spears and they stopped using, they stopped using like those, like, you know, like your typical medieval age weapons. They started to use like cannons, gunpowder weapons. And this is where you see they rise to the gunpowder empires, because what were they using? Gunpowder. And basically, in the empire, in the imperialism game, whoever has the best weapons wins. Think of like, think of like later on, so making connections, think of they scramble for Africa. They didn't have, they had the superior advantage over the weapon. So they were able to overwhelm Africa real quick, they were able to carve our Africa real quick, because it was the gunpowder. It was the advantage. It wasn't gunpowder, but, but at that time, but the point is superior, superior technology is technology. Well, it's, it's almost a determining component, like an empire, if you had it, you're good, you're good. You're getting there. And it, in, in, instead of like what people, most people think, like, no, they're not always fighting, of course. There are these highs and lows, you know? So there's also like friendly trade, because remember, you don't have to be economics major, but you need trade to fund your empire. It's not just, ah, I hate them, I hate them, let's invade them. No, we need, we need, we need, we need money too. We need to feed our people, we need to, um, we need to keep our empire together. So you need trade, you need stimulate the economy. And in some cases, they had low taxes too. So, um, that's a win-win, because usually you see a revolution, not revolutions yet, but like uprisings, like peasant uprisings, or you see, it's because of taxes, pretty much. These are like, hey, he's, they're, they're charging too much. So they revolted, and then ironically, they repeat the cycle and like, oh, I see how it feels now. Yes, you gotta charge high taxes again. But for the most part, you want low taxes to please your people, you know, no one's gonna complain. So that's one, like, that's like an overview of what a land-based empire is. And yes, and this is how they expand, once again, through conquest and technology. And you say local, that's a key takeaway for this. Now let's jump on to three point four. So we're comparing them. Give me one sec. Oops, skip that, we're gonna go back there later. Okay, land-based empires, like, like the maritime empires, they connected the eastern and western hemisphere, actually. Especially, they really, what's there in the world? Like, this is the, this is the Americas, this is Asia, this is Africa. What's like, it's kind of the center point here. It's the middle, it's kind of the Middle East, right? It's kind of Europe, well, not really Europe, but like more than Middle East. It connects Asia, Africa and Europe. That's why it's called Afro-Eurasia. Afro-Eurasia. So it connected the eastern, western hemispheres, not because they kind of just like frolick around and walk like, hey, Europe, how's it going? No, it's because of how, it's like, this is how they expanded. So if you think of, think of any empire in the Middle East, like, think of the Ottoman Empire. I, I mean, when I think of empires in the Middle East, I think of the Ottoman Empire, I think of the, the gunpowder empire. So like Ottoman, Savivet empire, which we'll go over later. But the point is, they connected both hemispheres. And by the way, that's within the, that's within the eastern hemisphere. What about the western hemisphere? We're gonna see them later in a, in a maritime empire, which I went over last unit. But in the west, in the western hemisphere, we see, um, we see, you know, the Aztecs, Incas, and the local, the local big, big powers over there. So eventually they'll be interconnected through maritime empires too. And see development of trade. More unlike being more efficient, so like, they stopped trading, they stopped using the barter system by the post-classical era, and now they're using more like, more realistic methods. You see the joint stock once again, which we see it more in the maritime, but we see like credit, we see, um, joint stock companies like rising, like insurance, like, that's like the, that's like the early age, like insurance. Religion spreads. Anything that spreads over, it's either disease, religion, trade. Or I'm missing something else, but that's like the big three. Because that religion is a given. When you're expanding an empire, you're like, oh, they don't believe my, they don't have my beliefs. They're, they're Heathens, let's change them. So we see it, um, we see a change, we see, um, we see, we see more like spread of religions here. We see rivalries, that's a given. You know, your neighbor's expanding over, you're here, you're here like chilling out, you're here. And you see empire expand, you see, you see your, your buddy here expanding like, hey, hey, hey. You're gonna be like, hey, hey, that's my land, what are you doing? And you're like, what do you mean? I, I need your land. And you see more conflict here, they're competing over land, competition over resources, over land, over power. Because power is more about like, it's about like the clout, like, are they, are they gonna listen to you if you don't have power? No. So you need that, you need to like fight your way up. So this is where you see like rivalries, you see conflicts, religious conflicts, because well, see, it's not always like, oh, this guy's, this guy's an Islamic empire, this guy's Islamic empire, no. It's gonna be more intense when there are different religions, because they have different theologies, they have different beliefs. It's gonna be more intense, so. Hey, King Dan. All right, uh, we see syncretism. Now this is another development at this time period. Syncretism is when you blend, you blend religion. So let's say, um, going back to the, let's say this, this guy's Islam, Islamic empire, this guy's Christian empire. Sometimes we see a blend, like an interesting blend, like in this local region, like they blended with their local beliefs. So jumping to, um, jumping to the Americas, when this, when the Spain, when the Spaniards, yeah, voodoo, yes. When the Spaniards came, we see, uh, in, in the Caribbean, we see voodoo, which, um, King Dan said. Um, we see like, we see local beliefs like being like, it's like a mix. So especially like, let's say like, it's like a, if you're, um, like a Christian, like the Virgin Mary or like the cross. We see a, we see a, mm-hmm, we see a, we see like local, like, we see like traditions of like, the deity, like the, the gods there, like, they look different, they're like Hawaii, because, because they combine their beliefs, they blend their rituals to blend their beliefs. So that's syncretism, just take a blend. Yes, Virgin of Guadalupe, thank you. I was like, obviously blanking, I was like, what is, what was that again? Yes. Yes, Centauri is a Cuban version of this, it'll be a, yes. So you see, you see how they have different names for it? That speaks volumes about this entire like culture, local culture differences. And speaking of that, we also see diverse populations. It's not only, because think about it, if you're in, if you're, um, I don't know, I just love using Mongols as analogy, because, so think of like, going back, go back, but I'll try to connect it back to periods. So in the Ottoman Empire, we have, we also have like smaller communities of like non-Muslim, um, subjects within the empire. This is the empire, we see like non-Muslim communities. And they just had to pay like a tax to live there and all. But the point is, it's diverse, it's not just always, because when you think, let's say, let's say, um, say the French Empire, but think about, think about like all of its territories. It didn't have French people living there the first place. It had like different, different like races, ethnicities, origins living there. So it's pretty diverse, incorporate these diversity within their empires, which either, um, for the, for better and for, and for worse. We see, once again, expansion, so they all expanded. So by the way, we're comparing these, so what did they all have? So these, the most advanced ones use gunpowder cannons. And chances are, if you see like their, sadly, if you see their, um, if you see pages and yes, gunpowder empires, if you see like more, like an entire chapter dedicated to this empire, unfortunately, you know, it's good, it survived that long. Because I always, I always complain about how Saudis, Asian empires are underrated, like in history books. But anyways, so, yeah, so gunpowder cannons and often they're like, if, um, there's trade conflicts, like what we call trade wars now, it was more violent then. Lastly, um, I'm not, I'm not discriminating any empires here, so, but I would say like, this is, when I was doing this, I was, I just typed whatever had my mind. So I was thinking, yeah, to the, um, yeah, the gunpowder empires, once again, Ottomans in modern day Iraq, Iran, so Middle East, the Mughal empire, a Islamic empire in India, which is weird. I know you sound weird, because like, aren't they Hindu? Yeah, but that's interesting in itself. And we have the Savivets, which was in conflict with the Ottomans, because we'll talk about it later. But, and we see the Manchu, the Qing, so you were like, wait, what's it, the Ming? So the Ming was taken over by the Qing later on, the Manchus. Okay, compare the Mughals to Delhi Sultanate. Okay, so time, time period wise, I would say Delhi Sultanate, it's, um, it's like a spiritual successor. I say, it's called like spiritual sequel off the historically, like chronologically, I just call it the spiritual successor, because they're both, compare it, they're both, is, they're both Islamic, they're both, um, they're both, yeah, they were both Islamic and, and they ruled over this Hindu majority, which is wow. But obviously, because of the time, because the Delhi Sultanate was way earlier, uh, the Mughals, um, survive, I'm not surviving, I'm saying something. The Mughals were more advanced in technology, which is, that's like the, I don't know, the silver lining. Uh, the Qing and the Manchu, the same thing, yes. They're the same. So I mean, Qing is the empire, the Manchus are the people ruling the empire. So it's like a, I think, I think it's an ethnicity or correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, basically Manchus are the group of people ruling in the Qing dynasty. So Qing is, is, is how I think about it. Yeah, so obviously, there's gonna be differences in what they successfully conquered and what they didn't. So, um, you can, you can also talk about that, uh, in your analysis, if ever you want to use evidence or it comes up in your, in your, let's see, in your examples, let's see. All right, next we're going to three. So going back, beliefs systems. So religion is a key component of empires, remember that. This is why we had like the Protestant Revolution, think about it. It, it, it's a key player in culture, like more than like how they behaved and how, um, they, they bade towards others and how, it's like your faith system, like a coping mechanism, like you have problems in life, even today. Or not, they're happy in life. So empires are also catalyst change. And when I say that, I mean like revolu, no, not revolutions yet. Like reform movements, like are happening, like on religion, are happening within these empires. It didn't always stay the same, that's why history is amazing. There's, there's continuities, but there's changes. So we see religious movements, once again, once again, I mentioned the Protestant Revolution, Reformation, uh, I can say revolution, but Protestant Reformation. It was, um, it started with Martin Luther alongside many other injustices by the church, like abused by church. He saw, he saw this, this guy, Tetzel, selling indulgences. Like, he's, he's, he's going, oh, um, when the easy pass to like, when they're like less time purgatory, like when easy pass to heaven, you know, you can just pay like, I don't know how much, but like, a lot. And when you look at it today, that's like, that's not how it works. Exactly, that's why Martin Luther stood up and he was like, it, I've had enough, the church is corrupt, we need, it's corrupt. And the Roman Catholic Church is just wrong in like one too many levels, so let's separate. So we see, we see the, we see the, we see the Catholic Church, we have the Protestants, which you can still see today, historical, they're, they're still alive in, you know, here. And yes, good point. So, and then the church, the Catholic Church realized, oh, yeah, he's right. So they launched the counter-Reformation and no, uh, they tried to win back, they tried to win back, like some of the Protestants were like, oh, we're changing for the better. So like, obviously, they, they fixed like, most of now, their, their misgivings back then. Butter, so that, um, but still, it didn't stop entirely the Protestants and just, it is separate even today. I mean, different. Once again, syncretism. I want to count this like a major compared to the Protestant Revolution, it's not really a major movement, but it's, it's a change. So I gave an example, Sikhism in, in, um, South, Southeast Asia. Usually, when you, when you see like these beliefs, usually like when there's like a lot of like different religions intermingling. So we see Islam, we see belief, Islamic beliefs, we see Hindu beliefs in this area. And they're like, huh, I'm pretty sure they overlap, I'm pretty sure they overlap some. So, um, at this, at this point, Guru Anak, like, you don't even know the name, but he started this, his, this religion, like Sikhism, he was like, hmm, they kind of, they kind of go well together. So you see that, you see that change. But religion is also the fuel to political fire. If you remember, I talked about empires competing, not only because of political interests, but because of religion. So it's like you're adding more fuel to the fire. You already have them fighting for political reasons, they're like, oh, yeah, um, I forgot, you're, you're not my religion, you're not, we're not, we don't have the same religion. So it's more, more the reason to fight, more the reason to fight. And that's, that's, um, more chaotic, I guess. So best example we give is the Sunni Shia conflict, which stems from, so we had the Sunni, we had the Sunni Muslims with the Shia Muslims. So one, um, so going back like historically before like, like six hundred C E, like one of them believed that. So when Muhammad died, Muhammad died, remember, Muhammad died, like you're looking for a successor. And she is sort of like, oh, you know, you need to be ancestor, you need to be his kid, his grandkid, his cousin. Actually, not a cousin, but like direct ancestor, like you need to be of his blood. And the Sunnis were like, no, as long as you're capable enough, as long as you're good enough, you can lead. So we see the split here. And the Ottomans were Sunnis, the Savivet empire was Shia. So do you think they have, what's the chances of them getting like, being peaceful? Like near, not necessarily zero, but near zero. The Mughals were like mediator, yes, that's, yes, but they didn't, yes, but they didn't like, it's not like the UN peacekeeper force, like, yeah, you better get, you better get your act together. Um, but yes, they did act, they did act like a mediator at some point, but yeah, it's like keeping each other in check. Like, they're still fighting, they're fighting over there, like the Middle East, you know, it's like the dominant conflict over there. And we also see continuities, so continuity and change, Islam, African, mostly Sunni. Hmm, good question. I would like, I have a pretty good chance of, yes, I was gonna say yes, but I was like, hmm, I think so, yeah. Oh, yeah, yes, yes, okay, thank you, thanks for, okay. Continuities, we see like, let's say, um, it's the same like, it's the same like, we see continuities like ever since, like if you're in the region, like whatever the dominant religion was back then, it's still the, the Like whatever the dominant religion was back then, it's still the dominant religions up to now. It's like from descend, descendant, descendant, it goes, it gets passed out. So. Like in the Inca, in the Inca and the Aztec, like the region, as it was still see polytheism, like. Even Native American tribes, we see polytheism. Before now, we see um, you didn't think about it, the Toltecs, the Mayas, we see polytheism. Is Shia anywhere besides Persia, Iran? Yes, they're actually like smaller cells, but. But Persia, Persia slash Iran is like the, like the center, like the, not a capital, I wouldn't say capital. But like the center piece of this like Shia Shia movement, but yes, there were like some smaller, smaller um. Territories like where Shia, it's not, they're not entirely Sunnis, so. Um yeah, um so like, let's say, give me another country, um yeah, Middle East. Before like a six hundred, before like hit, before like during Muhammad's time, it's like six hundred C E. It was, it was when he took over, not took over, but he um he was able to spread Islam there. It was Islamic. And think about today. It's it's still Islamic. So we see the continuities there, like we see consistencies. Yeah, yeah. So um we're talking about, um yeah, that, good point. Uh I must just talk about like the constantly concerning like the Aztec and Incas, but yes, you can see um. That's like the turning point, like that's more of a uniform thing because Spain is a maritime empire, so I'm just talking about land empires, but yes. So polytheism gone, most of them converted or they're just gone. So most of them become like Christian. I mean, sports specifically Catholic because of Spain and Portugal and all these other European powers over there. Yes, there's a ship. Um this was three. Okay, so we're going to last one. So how do empires administer themselves? Once again, they're huge and complex, so you can't just go, if you're, if you're a ruler, you can't just go, oh hmm. Yeah, I I got this. No, you need like, think of, you're a company, think of like, think of like your your company, you need like hundreds of. People helping you, you need bureaucracy, you read a bureaucracy. So you wanna, and who do you trust? Think of the pyramid. People at the top didn't always trust the, didn't always trust the, what do you call it, the the people, the the like, the the working class, the common class. So they they resort to military and elites. And we see Janissaries or slash the devil Shermi system. So yeah, King Dan's popping off on Chad like he um. Where the um the Janissaries were like Christian, Christian, like Christian, Christian like kids from like. From like these um throughout the empire where they take them in and they train them. To become like these obedient like elites, because once again, you also want to keep the power. So they were kind of like trained with a mentality like, oh, yeah, you have to take over. Um I mean, you don't have to. Like, it's just obedience. It's more on, it's more on. Like keeping the power on the top with it with the with the ruler to as well. Well, see the samurai, so administering the land. So remember, before United Japan. Before Tokyo with Japan, samurai people were like, what what do you think of a samurai? You know, they were like soldiers, soldiers. But now Japan's united, like they're like, what's the point? And elites, um not elites, but the but the. Show the the Shogun, the the emperor was like, oh, we need, we need to have these guys do something. Where eventually you're gonna turn on us. You know, we had to curry them in our favor. This where you see um, this where you see them like being part of this bureaucracy, this you administer land. And you see, also you all see tribute system in Aztecs, so um. It's one of tax collection and also tax farming on the Mughals, that's right. We all see monuments, art, fancy buildings. Why? Tell me why, but aren't they busy fighting other empires? Not always. Because you want to, you want, it's not only expanding outward. You want to keep your people within your empire, you know. Love lovey dovey with you, like you don't want them to rebel against you. So we see this is a connection between the ruler and the religion. We see, so think of um, let's see, I can't think of one now. Uh just think of this um the sun temple in in the Inca Empire, like a Costco, not Costco, but. This just shows like there um, this just demonstrate, you can tell like, oh, um if you're familiar with a lot of religions, you see that that's definitely not a Christian. Definitely not a Christian facade, like architecture, the design, you see like, you see, you see, it's a sun temple, if you look, you go inside there. Um you can see like, oh, the repoly is, they believe in the god of the sun, like the god of the wa- the winds, something like that. So you see a connection between the ruler and the religion. What you'll connect to later on to divine right. Hmm, interesting. Um military power. We see um, because think about it, if you have all these, if you're powerful enough to have like houses and people build this. That speaks volumes of how powerful you are, like not every empire has a great pyramid, a great pyramid in Egypt. Not every empire has a Taj Mahal. You know, the most influential empires get to like call the shots and and build, build, build. Also emojis there flexing, you know. This level, this is a little love about empires, like Age of Empires or I've been played Civsia, but civilizations, but one of these days. Also religious buildings, culture, I mean ceremony, religious ceremonies, so like, you know, even. From the human sacrifice in the Aztec Empire to the, you know, a lot of, a lot of things like funerals. We or um like in Taj Mahal, the um. Like it was like a final, final departing gift to one of the ruler's wives um. So Palace of Versailles, personally, um I think it's more of a, more of a power, it's more of a power um. Power, um they call this. For power. How I guess it'd be, it's, yes, it was, it was, it was a church during the Byzantine Empire, but he got. When the Ottomans took over, woke mosque, yes. Military demonstrations. Now, this is where you see um like the Pals of Versailles, why it's so wide. Why it's so like vast? One, it's her power. Two, they can do military demonstrations. Like you can see today in the news, North Korea doing all this like missile, um they they're like creating their missiles, their military might. More of like a flex and to scare people, scare other empires. Divine right, that's why I was saying, connection between ruler and religion, you gotta keep people believing in you. So what you gotta do is just act like, oh, you know, God um sent me here. So you gotta be me, something like that. So we see in Africa, we see in even in the um. It it's not necessarily like Christianity, it's more of like, this is a concept, like the magnet of heaven thing, like the concept, so. So um yeah, they're sad. So oop, that took longer than expected, but I'm pretty sure we touched over everything. But if you have questions, just let me know. We have everyone in chat helping out. So hook up slam. So I just put like all the terms that I from the presentation, from what I remember over there. So if you wanna know more about any of the terms. Just also, you don't have to memorize all that, first and foremost. It's just um hmm, I'd say no, be familiar with most of them. At least know a third of them, like because it just pops in your head, like personally, if you just remember. Like association, like, oh, this time period, like, oh, um, there's an empire there. And what was it? The Middle East, Ottoman, like you used to go that. So um, yeah, what do you want to know more about, like in the comments? For Constantinople, so yes, I thought you were asking, but like, I think you know, the Bakhti movement, so. It's just another, um I would use this evidence, so it it was in India, um it was one of those um. So if you think about it, like, that's why I put into it with suf- sufism, sufism, because um similarly to how. Muslims like missionaries were like the Sufi missionaries were like spreading all around, like through like mysticism. It's not the traditional um Islamic like missionary. Uh the Bakhti movement was in um was more like the it's like the Hindu counterpart of that. So it was more throughout India. It's like a resurgence. So it's like, it's more of like, because there are ties with, everyone stops believing, like you see like dips in like faith. And like, we need to revitalize this. So the Bakhti movement was one of those for Hinduism in India. It's one, it's one of the more scary examples, but good question, yeah. I like that. All right, anything else? I might um cut this to um, I guess three minute, um until ten minutes, we'll do five minutes. Taj Mahal. So remember um the Mughal Empire was in India, so one of the gunpowder empires first and foremost, but Taj Mahal. Um it was built. So there's Akbar the Great, we just seen the list. Akbar the Great was the guy known for for being tolerant religions. And then after him was Shah Jahan, his son, and he had a wife. At some point she died, so Taj Mahal was built as like a. To like, I think a tomb, like a memorial for her, like imagine like being that that's sweet, but um. Yeah, um it's pretty much like the purposely Taj Mahal, similar like a memorial. And think about it, it always showcase the power of the Mughal Empire at that point. So hitting two um, hitting two birds with one stone. Yes, indigenous Japanese religion. You got it. Hey, Tanya. Don't worry, we got some replays after this, um within twenty four hours. Shintoism, yes, shintoism is Japanese religion, um indigenous Japanese religion. It kind of had like some Zen Buddhism elements too, so if you like nature imagery there. So yes, it is a mosque. Yeah, yeah, when I first learned about the the Mughal, I was like, oh, they're Hindu, no, they're they're Islamic. I was like, oh. Interesting. Yes, Taj Mahal was a mosque. Let's see, left last call. I'll name a few, um I'll grab a few. So Jizya Ta- Jizya Tax was, everybody talks about the Ottoman Empire. And they tax non-Muslims. It's called the Jizya Ta- Tax. Samurai versus Ronin, Ronin were like mercenaries. So think of like, if you watch Avengers um Endgame. You know how Hossai was thrown in and he's just wondering, he's kind of like wandering around, so. You can see, you see a connection there. It is taken like a random term, like, oh, Ronin. Um, okay. Mm hmm. All right, let's move on. So I'm gonna do a quick overview of the DBQ. So first of all, if you're, I know you're doing, probably doing hippie, hip happy hop, so it may vary. But um this is a little bit real quick. So uh when you're doing document analysis, it's what um yet, yeah. Uh it's not every document, by the way. Uh in some documents, you had to analyze it like zero in on one of the four. Not all of the four, that's what I did last year and that took a lot of time, but one of the four. So it's either historical context, what is happening? Intended audience, who are you talking, like who is this document reaching out to? So if I draw image of, if I draw political cartoon of um hmm. And basically, if you're crit- is it critiquing something, is it addresses something? So uh point of view. Like who is speaking, who's the artist, like not not literally, but let's say it's a German cartoon of World War One. And you see, uh we see like eliminate, um no, 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 like, let's say, like someone supporting Holocaust, like purge the Jews. And yes, it sounds hor- horrifying, but you you can tell that the point of view is someone who is against the Jews. He's anti-Semitic. Purpose, why did he make this? Why, what's this document for? If it's a letter to, if it's a letter from a diplomat of China to the to 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 the United States. Then it's meant to either challenge the United States, meant to, it's meant to, oh. Yeah, it's either challenging the United States, either to reach out. And outside evidence, that counts for two points in the, in the, what do you call this? In the new rubric, which, speaking of rubric, I'll go over the rubric. So and I see discussion in the comic, comments. It's out of ten points now. Is this one, as usual, if you're doing DBQ practice, context one. Evidence is five points and you're like, what? Well, it's three from the documents. If you use two documents and you like explain them well, I think. I I'm 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 just worried this briefly, but if you explain well. That's a point. If it's analyzed at least four or five, yes, that's another point. So it's three point, oh. Hmm, I just took it, I just took this from the, I just took this from the um, what do you call this, like the AP Histories, some rubric, but. Yeah, two from the outside, outside evidence one, outside evidence two, so you can bullet it in your paragraphs. And then we have three for analysis. So if you hip one document, that's good, that's a point. If you hip another document, that's another point. And there's a unicorn point, which everyone loves to get so bad. Because it's just sophistication, it's just, even I had difficulty getting it, even I'm an A push now and I'm like hmm. But basically, you see that evidence has a lot of weight. You see analysis a lot of weight. But you can get these first two points in your first paragraph. So it's about time management and we're gonna do more in the next, in the next um. The next, we call this, in the next Q and A stream, I might do like an actual like mini DBQ practice, so if you're, stay tuned. What did I, oh, they didn't, they don't tell, they don't tell you what you get, but this year, they're actually gonna tell you because it's online. They give you feedback, which I think so, I think they'll give feedback. Uh Mr. Beckman, can you confirm me in that? But hopefully they give feedback, so that'll help for next year. But yeah, I'm pretty sure I didn't get the unicorn point for sure. Uh, okay, so no, no feedback, I guess. I guess college board being college board. Okay, um, okay, well, what time is it? All right, ten minutes. All right, so we're just gonna jump on, we're gonna jump on, uh I'll double check that too. Yeah, um, oh yeah, this is Beckman here, is actually an AP reader, so he knows some more, definitely knows some more than I do when it comes to like grading these and. Okay, I probably didn't, I'll I'll double check the um rubric, I thought it was out of ten, but hey. Sorry about that. Um I'll fix the slides later when I send this. Okay, so let's do the hip, let's do some practice based on what we know today. So I'll have you guys read it real quick. I mean, not real quick, but I'll give you time. Just just tell me when you're done in the chat, do drop an emoji, like like, thumbs up. Uh how do you get? Oh, you asked for logistics, um. Actually, that's a good question. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that too, because um I'm pretty sure they they're, I think I guess set a link. Yeah, a portal. We'll see. I think I guess I had a walkthrough though soon, so like a step by step, like a video guide, like a stream, like a stream today. Um yeah, so I'll have you guys read the. I'll have you guys read the um this document real quick and and once you're done, we'll do the hippo today together. And it's a letter by an Sultan of the Ottoman Empire. To the Sultan of the Savid Empire, certainly speaks volumes. Definitely, probably two different prompts. So yeah, by the way, just skim this, uh especially um in DBQs, you don't have time to read all of it. So find the the, find the key points. All right, once ready. Yeah. Let's wait for like a couple others. I'll review this too, because I just, I'm doing it spontaneously. I haven't read any of this, by the way, so it's a genuine experience. Okay, so. You know what's happening here, um so just even even with the document gives, the doc, even the the caption gives hints. So I already know, if you're doing hi- historical context, it's a letter from the Sunni Emperor to the. I mean Sunni Sultan to the Shia Sultan, so um and and don't stop at like that literal context. Like think of what's happening, and I think someone mentioned in the chat, but it's this um. It's this, um, it's a conflict between the Sunni and the Shia, just think of like that, um, that they're not, they're not like. Good old friends, no, um, it's more of like, they're like. It, just like ten terse relations. So we see that too, um, make, but it's, yeah, read for evidence, that's, that's a good strategy too. So context, you can say Sunni Shia conflict, you see, you see words here, like in the second paragraph, we see oppression, we see blameless, we see. We see, because you see like a lot of tone words, like pro, no, oppression, oops, unsanctified, so you see all of it. All this, um, all these, um, tone word, they're powerful words. Intended audience, so you could take this literally and say, oh, it's the Shia, Shia Sultan, but don't stop there, if you're doing hi- hip. If you're doing hip. Explain why would you think he would address him, like what, why? And that ties in with purpose, like why is it meant, why is he doing, why is he, why is he, um, why is he writing a letter? Is he, is he threatening him, is he, is he, um, is he, is he complimenting him? No, I think it's more the former, right? Once again, look at this, we look at purpose, look at the tone words, look at the oppression, look at the, uh, look at the, the devious. Undermine the firm foundation of the faith, subjected to your devious will, that's just like accusatory, you're accusing him. So you see here how religions like different like, differently called this, um, different like. Beliefs like play a role in the conflict, just intensify it fortunately. Point of view, obviously, whereas whoever was writing this, a Sunni Muslim. Um, you can stop there, if you're doing the hip on that. Yes, Tanya, hmm, you're killing it, um, you see, um, point of view, you see, um. See, um, someone who is A, someone who is upset. At the Shia Muslims, so you can say that, you can, you have to stop at what's on the text. Yeah, I wish you could highlight too, I'm looking for a way to, um. Yeah, I just did it spontaneously, so maybe next time I'll highlight, uh, I'll, I'll, we'll figure it out next time, so. We're, we're, we're switching things around for, for the, um, we're switching things around exactly, so you go back to history, it exists because of. There's differences, but yeah, um, we're switching, we're switching things around soon, so maybe we will do it again. I'm sorry, um, outside evidence, you can talk about, yeah, I think King Dan already, um, gi- gave it out, gave away, so outside evidence, you can say. You can say, looking back at history, um, you can, you can, you can do that, I guess, um, but. Like, oh, they, um, they exist because of like differences in like beliefs and, um, who should succeed Muhammad, so I can say that. All right, um, let's see, I'll, I'll do this for last if we have time, but I wanna skip to this, I wanna do an image with you guys, and it's pretty. Hmm, I'm not gonna give it away, but tell me when you're ready, like you, you've looked at enough hints in the image. I'll look at it too, so. Exactly, actually, my teacher goes like, don't, when you're like introducing a document, don't quote it. I know, um, you should back me, um, by counter, um, but. I wouldn't, um, I wouldn't quote entirely because it's just like blank lines, just wanna look through it, they want, they want to look at your analysis, not your quoting skills. Um, okay. I, I see some people responding, so I guess we're ready, so you see, you see, um. You see the, this is the embassy. Yeah, this is the embassy, you see these Siamese people at the back. You see these people bowing, that's subservience, that's subservience, cone shape, ooh, that's interesting, you say that too, um. You see your everyone, you see like the stereotypical noble class on the top, like you can talk about the symbolism of this entire thing, you can talk about royalty. And yes, the Siamese is actually owned by the French, so, but still, they aren't gonna dock you points off just because of their royalty, but, um. At least, at least you got narrowed down with European nobles, okay, so context, what's going on? I think you already said that, Rosa, um, the French did own the Siamese, like they, um, they, when they were expanding. Um, you can say, yes, colonies battled for royalty, that's context two, you can count that too, uh, you can say, what did, what do you see here? Yeah, yeah, it's pretty much it, yeah, uh, if you're choosing to do, um. You're choosing to do, um, audience, okay, by the way, um, with its images, I. Firstly, it's tricky for, to do, um, it's tricky to do audience because you don't know. All, I mean, sometimes you do know, but usually it's trickier, so when you're doing HIPAA, hip. Like stick to the E, like just look at what stands out, like pick the easiest, don't go like, um. I'm gonna do H, I'm gonna do P, and I'll pick which one, just, just, you have like forty five minutes, so just get through that, get through it, but. If you, if you do have time, you think you, you're confident enough, I guess, go for it. Point of view, yeah, if it's, if it's a propaganda poster, it works. I don't know, teach your own, but that's what I think, um, but yeah, POV, um, depends on the image, I guess. Um, purpose. Uh, we call this on purpose, so, um. You see them kneeling, what does that represent? So once again, it's subservience. It's them bowing down, they're, them being unfortunately inferior. So, um, you can say that, you can say that, that's the POV, like, um, not POV, purpose, to show like the colony subservience. Or subservience, like, what's another word, obedience to, um, the French. Um, let's see, ready, I think we're done with POV, um. Outside evidence, you can talk about how, once again, age of, imperial, not age of imperialism, um. When they, um, it, it just general French, the French Empire expanding. You know, it had the Palace of Versailles, it had the, um, it had colonies inside, I mean, colonies in, in the China, it colonies here, 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 here. So you can talk about that too. Um, yeah, so it's pretty much it, so. Whoop, we don't, I, I guess we don't, um. Hmm, I guess if you want, you can stay for this, the, I'll, I'll stay for like, I don't know, hopefully get this done, maybe like five minutes, but if you want, um. If you're, um, if you're, if you have some other class, thank you. But I guess, uh, I'll just, I just have you guys do, do this, I want to send a slide, so you guys do this on your own practice. Try to, oh yes, you can highlight, uh, make a copy, you can highlight on your own. Or just write some notes and try to do this on your own. And let's see how you do, and then, um, if you go on next week's stream. I'll, I'll briefly talk about this too, so for those of y'all who are, who, who are staying with me here is, um, who are, um. Throughout this six week Q and A session series, so thank you guys, um, thank you guys for. Uh, yes, it's a Q and A, so everything's a Q and A, so, um, I might switch things around again, like it's not always content. It's not always, it's not always. Because, because I realized, like, when I did the first one, I was like, oh, I went to overboarding content, everyone's probably bored, but. This time I'm giving you the free rein to do this. Oh, where's the document? I'll send an email, I'll make a Google Doc with the document, oh, and I'll add the good. Yeah, I'll, I'll send it to you guys, so you should get the email, yeah, so once again, thank you guys. See you next week, bye-bye. I know it's pretty quick, but time flies, man.